Okay. It is six o'clock.
Wow.
So, good evenings, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance, as well as those of you watching this meeting on City 7, to the Tuesday, July 23, Planning Commission meeting. Will we, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we're ready for roll call.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner Torres? Chairman McLean?
Here. And I'm officially going to call this to order at 6:01. There's no one in the audience tonight, so I will not need to swear anybody in for opportunities to speak for or against cases. So, we will go ahead and begin with the consent agenda. Commissioners, anybody have any additions? Or?
That was on 6/25, right? The last one?
Yes.
No, it wasn't. Oh, July.
If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Comis-, or Chairman McLean?
Yes.
I make a motion we approve the minutes from the July 9, 2024 meeting and the June 25, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes. Questions?
Questions?
This was the last meeting?
Oh, again, look, there's two up there. You got that?
I was looking for our meeting, so.
Nope. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres? Chairman McLean?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Okay. Next thing is continued case. We need to vote on these, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What about the withdrawn cases? Do we vote on those?
I'm sorry, the withdrawn was?
No, the withdrawn cases, those are just for you to note that they were withdrawn. We don't need to vote on those.
Okay. Case number 24-125-07, rezoning PUD Jackson Drive and R.D. Mays Road. Requested by Jim Pollard to remove, rezone the property from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial and R12 PUD Two Family Residential Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan has requested that we move it to be continued to August 13. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 24-125-07 has, is continued to August 13. Case 24-125-08, rezoning of 2710 Southwest Port Road. Requested by Rosemary Hoover to rezone the property from R6, which is Single Family Residential, to R6/PUD Single Family Residential Planned Unit Development and approve a preliminary development plan has requested to be continued to August 13, 2024 meeting as well. Commissioner?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 24-125-08 has been continued to the August 13, 2024 meeting. Our first public hearing case is case number 24-100-16, rezoning of 15552 East US 24 Highway. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yes. As you mentioned, this is case 24-100-16 at 15552 East US 24 Highway. The applicant is Robert and Carolyn Rogers, and the action is to rezone from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential. So, here's an aerial photograph. You can see the highlighted property in red. It's on the east side of 24 Highway, south of Mays Road. Here's kind of a more close-up view of the property. You can see that most of the front area is a paved parking lot. So, this is the zoning map. Like a lot of the properties along 24 Highway, it's got a mixed zoning of commercial closer to 24 and residential on the rear side. But there are some other zoning uses nearby, like commercial north of Mays Road and then office across the street. However, those are not offices. I believe where it's zoned office is apartments. So, the Conference of Plan shows this entire area to be residential neighborhoods with office to the north, north of Mays, and then parks kind of to the northeast. And here's the notification map. The properties in the pink area were notified of the public hearing. So, the proposal. The applicant seek to rezone the property at 15552 East US 24 Highway from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential so that they can use the property as a residence. The property history. The residential lot, Lot 77 in WB Dickinson, was platted in October of 1949. The addition was annexed into the city in 1955. In 1965, it was zoned C3 Commercial. In 1980, the zoning was updated to C2 General Commercial. And, but the rear of the property had always been Single Family Residential. Just that part along 24 was C2. The property then had a legal unconforming residential use and later a beauty salon along with their residential use. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the applicant not wanting to comply with partition and spacing expenses, she ceased her operation and decided to retire. Currently, there is not a commercial business on the property, and the legal non-conforming residential use has expired. So, to clarify, this was being used as a commercial space, and during the events of the pandemic, the business closed, and the owner wanted to use this as a residential space. They were living on the property, and then there was a code violation letter that they received. And to fix the issue, they are now requesting to rezone the property to R6 so that they can live on the property. The physical characteristics of the property. The internal layout of the house is still mostly residential, although the entirety of the front yard is paved surface. The great bulk of the property, much of which, much of which is already zoned R6, is a deep backyard with some wooded area. The physical characteristics, characteristics of the area. The house sits on the west side of US 24 Highway, about half a block south of the offices for Mid-Continent Library System. The area is largely commercial in nature, although many of the properties are converted old homes, and the city's Conference of Plan envisions residential uses for the area. Ribbons of commercial zoning flank both sides of the corridor, but the rear of most properties are zoned R6 Single Family Residential. A used car lot lies to the north, and an automobile repair shop lies to the south. Across US 24 Highway is a shed dealership and a townhouse development owned by a condominium manor, owned in a condominium manor. So, the consistency with the strategic plan. Res zoning the property is consistent with the strategic plan. One of the objectives is to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. The Conference of Plan guiding use principles for the current designation. The Conference of Plan envisions the future land use of this property and surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. Historic and archaeological sites. There are no apparent historical or archaeological sites located on the property. Public utilities. All utilities are present on site and available in the adjacent, in the adjacent rights of way. And CIP investments. There are currently no CIP investments in the area. So, for the pictures, this is kind of looking directly at the property. The, you can, as you mentioned in the report, you can see the most of the front yard is paved. This was likely a parking lot at some point. So, this is facing southwest, looking at the adjacent property. So, there is a fence that will screen the adjacent commercial use to this property. This is looking south, looking down 24 Highway. This is facing southeast, looking across 24. This is facing east, looking directly across 24 Highway. This is facing northeast, looking across the highway. This is facing north, looking kind of up the highway. And then this is facing northwest, looking at the adjacent property, that used auto lot. Again, there is fencing to act as screening between the uses. And then we're back, and we kind of did a 360. We're back, looking directly at the property facing west. And the recommendation is, the staff recommends approval of this rezoning. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you. We're going to have you stand up and be sworn in, if that's okay?
Sure. Can I just stand up here or right here?
Right there's fine.
Okay.
Will you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you promise to tell the truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and tell us about?
Sure.
Your application?
Yes.
No, no, at the mic.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, and give your full name, your name and your address, please.
Okay. Hi. My name is Melanie Sue Rogers, and my mother, Carolyn Rogers, is the property owner. I am inheriting the property, and I oversee it for my mom because my mom and dad are elderly now. So, basically, my mom had bought the property originally in 1996, and it used to be, of all things, way back, okay, in the 1940s, I believe, it was built, and it was a home, a residential home. And then, it might have been zoned. I know it was part, when you look at the actual title when my mom purchased it, it was a subdivision plot, part of Dickinson, because there is a subdivision of Dickinson right behind it. And so, but at one point, it was a little daycare, and also, it was a little realty company. So, my mom ended up buying it in 96. She had a bed in the back, and I laugh about that because my folks, they live out on Lake City Valley Road, almost to Buckner, but they're still in Independence. But, I always said if my mom and dad got in an argument, she kept a bed there to sleep if she needed to. But in the front, she had a station for where she did hair, you know, and she just did clients through the years, just minimal, nothing big. So, and then, when COVID hit, so then, okay, through the county, it was zoned a portion residential, a portion commercial. And then through, when COVID had hit, most of my mother's clientele, because she is 75, but they were in their 80s and actual 90s. And so, sadly, a lot of them either passed on or they couldn't get out anymore. And my mom, since her clientele had been passing away, literally, she just didn't have the means to put in all of the partitions for the spacing for COVID. And literally, she would have only made $100, literally, a week if she had pursued it any further. So, with that being said, we went ahead and took, we got ahold of the county, and we took down this signage for the beauty shop part, and we did everything they had asked. So, the actual county had went ahead and turned it to 100% residential. And so, this is the part that we erred on. I apologize, but we didn't know that we had to do something with the city. And so, now, when my mom had called up and talked to Brian, she went ahead and, you know, made a payment to turn it over to 100% residential. And so, I live there now. As a matter of fact, my significant other is home on hospice right now. So, sadly, he's going to pass away. But, when he moves on, you all, I will be living there alone. So, and honestly, I anticipate that I will take care of my mother and father as they age. I like to keep them out of a nursing home. So, I would imagine we probably, I'd take care of them there. So, okay? So, that's why we are asking for it to be residential now.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry that you're struggling with these things right now.
Oh, it's all right, you know.
County and city can be confusing.
It's okay. Well, we felt bad because we thought we had done everything right, but, you know, we just try to follow the rules, so.
You did.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'm hopeful we can do that because it would be, you know, a lot, a lot more economical for my mom as far as taxes are concerned, of course, because it was literally, she didn't make that much. It wasn't like she had a big business there. She made like $12 haircuts. So, the taxes on that, when it was, when she was paying commercial, was about $3,600 a year. So, that was quite a bit.
Yeah.
So, that would definitely put us down into an affordable bracket of around, I think, $1,300. Don't quote me exactly, per year, so, as of now. But we haven't received the new tax bill yet, so. So, thank you, you all, for your consideration.
Absolutely. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I have one of the staff. Rick, did you find out about the, the carport?
Yes, so if the carport, and we'll have to take a look at it, if it's 120 square feet or smaller, then it could stay there. If it's larger than that, then we would just have to look to see if it's, and basically, if it matches a principal structure or not. But, we can look at that. It doesn't look like it's that big. It looks like it's only one car size. So, it's probably within that 120, but we can verify that.
Okay.
Could I make a point on that, sir?
Yes.
Okay. That is just, okay, so when my mom was doing hair there, she parked her car under that carport?
Right.
And we don't need it? And I do know, you guys, that it is on wheels. Well, it's sitting there on a frame. The frame sits on top of the pavement, and I can actually get that moved. I believe wheels come out.
I asked staff about it because it seemed like it was a little close to the road. That's why, that's why for residential use, we're there back farther, so that's why I asked staff.
And I was going to see, I haven't pursued this yet, but I do believe we are going to need to move it because they are going to be building in, I believe, a sidewalk there. That's the future project, I believe. And so, we can either disassemble it and take it down altogether, or I was also going to ask maybe if I could move it to possibly... So, the driveway to the left of the home would be like a standard driveway if you came in and went down to it. I was even thinking about just putting it at the base of that, the end of that drive, back behind, and maybe parking.
That seems reasonable to me. I mean, I don't see any problem since it's, like Rick said, long as it's under 100.
Whatever he said.
Yeah, 120 square feet or something, yeah, so it seems like it's fine.
Oh, that would be wonderful because I would prefer that anyway.
I'm sure.
Instead of it being up by the road, so. I can get that done.
Okay.
Jeff's son, so my significant other's son is coming to help me mow and whatnot, and I can, him and I, he and I can move it back there. But do I need to get a permit for that, or is it?
You just have to ask staff, so.
Okay. So, that's the other thing. I need, I didn't know what to do till I asked the authorities, so.
Go ahead.
Oh, if it's, so you'll need, need to measure the, really, if it's less than 120 square feet, you know, we, you can really do whatever with it. We wouldn't require a permit. It may require a permit if it's more than 120 square feet, but we'll have to just see what the actual dimensions are.
Sure.
I don't know that it is from looking at it, but, you know, can't know till we actually measure it.
Okay. Do you want me to, you're welcome to stop by anytime, or I can take them for you.
Either way, would work. We could organize something, but if you, I mean, if you want to do it, that's fine, too.
Sure. I wouldn't mind at all.
Yeah.
Sure. Yes, and if I can just get your name, I think you might have spoke to my mother.
Yeah, we can talk after.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. Commissioners, any more questions of the applicant?
I just had one.
Yes.
Of the staff.
Oh.
Sounded like from her recollection of C1 or commercial back in the 40s and then residential and then both, and the subdivision, et cetera. So, keeping in line with the city's goals of moving this to residential, I'm in support of this. But my question is, is there anything because of its proximity to 24 Highway and all the pavement that would be cumbersome for her from a code, I guess, of residential?
Yes, so, are, the zoning code does not allow a person to pave more than 40% of their front yard for residential zones. However, if this, because the pavement was legally established while it was commercial, it would be grandfathered and it would be considered a legal nonconformity.
Good. I want, that was my concern for her, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'm also worried about the sewer line, to be quite honest with you, if I ever have to replace that. But, we think it may have been replaced, I hope, so.
Fingers crossed for you.
Yes, fingers crossed. Thank you. Thank you, though, for bringing that up.
All right, thank you. You can be seated.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any more questions before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve case 24-100-16, rezoning 15552 East US 24 Highway.
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 24-100-16, rezoning of 15552 East 24 Highway has been approved. Congratulations and best of luck. Thank you. Okay. Roundtable. Next meeting is August 13, 2024.
Rick, with the addition of those two, how, how big is that meeting?
So, I think we have about five, potentially five actual cases that we'll look at, so it's not terrible. The, we do have some that'll, that are going to be on the consent agenda, so we'll have those ready. If you guys are prepared for those, if you want a presentation, but it shouldn't be like nine or anything like that on this one, so.
Thank you. Shouldn't be no guarantees?
Yeah.
I didn't hear a guarantee. Okay. Well, Josh left the building for a minute.
So, I'll talk about the, the Mark training that I gave you. So, you guys take a look at that and see if it's something you want to do. We will set you guys up for those. It's kind of a, from what I understand, it's kind of an online self-training, so just let us know. Actually, send that to Miranda, and we can get that set up. I think we can, because it's any time between basically now and the end of the year. So, I think we can set that up even like this week or next week or something like that. So, let us know. I think it's a good training. It's specific to Planning Commission. I do want to say that I have talked to Jeremy Coover, and we are working on another training session that's kind of a modified version of several of the ones that some of you may have been a part of that kind of talks about more specificity about Robert's Rules and really probably similar to something like this, but more specific for this group and the city, so. I'll wait until Josh gets back.
Let's just break out the cupcakes. Just start eating them before he gets back.
So, this was going to be Josh, Josh Garrett's last meeting with us. As some of you have heard at the beginning of the meeting, he'll be leaving us for another city. Bigger and better things. We did want to thank him for his service here and everything that he's helped us with, with a lot of these cases. They've been pretty complicated cases, and so we do have some cupcakes here tonight to celebrate that. Gabe Glacier is here. He will be a replacement. He's kind of in training. He will be working kind of behind the scenes with Brian as we start getting cases put together, all the files and contacts with the property owners and applicants. At some point, when, when he's, feels ready and we're ready to put him out there, he'll be out here doing presentations for you guys as well, so.
Rick, can I ask you a personnel question? That doesn't violate anything, I'm sure. I'm a little concerned about Brian being the only planning and with just the stuff we have. So, is that something you step in and take some of that role?
Yeah, I mean, we can all understand that whether it's myself, Tom, Miranda, Yeah, I mean, we can all understand that whether it's myself, Tom, Miranda, I mean, we all, if we need to help with any of these cases, yes.
Okay.
So it is difficult, you know, it's, it's not been an easy thing sometimes to find, you know, people right now, especially those interested. When, when we found Josh, it actually took a while. And as you know, you, you train people up and, you know, just hard to replace them and. Yeah, so, but you know, bigger and better things, you know, you're, that's, that's the goal and, and so. So Gabe has been in our business licensing department for how many years? Four years? Four years. And so he has had a lot of experience with our code. A lot of the things that you guys have asked about, you know, business licensing and enforcement and stuff, that's part of where that department comes from. That's part of the things that he's done. So granted, that's one section of the code and zoning and development's a totally other section. So that's the part that he's got to get used to. But the good part is, is that he knows a pretty good section of what we already have in place. And so it's really just the logistics of getting him used to the cases and doing presentations. So I'm sure he's probably not going to be nervous the first time he has to present a case to you guys, so.
We are so scary, too. So.
But that is all I have.
Anybody have any questions of Rick before Josh comes back in the building so we can thank him publicly?
Let's just all yell Josh.
Eric, do you want to go get him?
Hey, Josh.
Meanwhile, thank you Hallmark for filming a movie.
Well, this is that good customer service that, I'm, I'm assuming he's talking to the applicant up there.
He's disappeared?
He has left the building.
And his computer is here, so. That's really because Rick wanted cupcakes tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't know if he's got anything prepared or not. So I doubt. It's probably pretty simple.
Well, we can publicly thank Hallmark and the Chiefs for doing a movie on the square. That's been fun.
Woo-hoo.
For the city.
Tyler Hines hit me up.
What's that?
I said Tyler Hines hit me up.
He was out there taking pictures with people today. Every day he does it. It's very nice. I think that's the difference with a company like Hallmark. They're not so full on themselves. They just come to towns, take pictures. Just fun for the city. To see the city like we do.
Yeah, we can. We can if you want. I mean, it's a pin.
Yeah, I felt fine in my sleeveless blouse while they're in coats. Joshua. It says a lot about Josh. With you sitting in the air conditioning, drinking water.
It, it does. Yeah, and one of the things that, and I know Gabe's been shadowing Josh for the last couple of weeks is that interaction. I mean, you guys don't really see that part of it, but the interaction between the applicants. There's a lot of that that goes back and forth. I mean, many, through, excuse me, through phone calls, letters, things of that nature. So we know, you know, as you guys know, the code's complicated and cases are complicated. And so it's imperative that that part of the job is critical. You know, it's not just the report writing and it's not just the, you know, giving you guys the presentation and putting the pictures together.
So Josh just entered the building after talking to our last applicant, which I think is, is wonderful and admirable, yeah, that you, I always see you leave after each one to go talk to the applicant and I think that is such a great service to the city. So Josh is leaving us. Rick? I know you already kind of repeated, but we want to thank you so much.
Yes, we wanted to thank you and obviously have cupcakes here and everything. So thank you for all the services that you've done and helping us with all these cases. And I know this commission has, even though they may not express it all the time, really relied on all your expertise in GIS and everything that you've brought to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you all, too. I appreciate it.
Josh, I'll just say I, I felt you raised the bar. So thank you.
Thank you. That really means a lot.
Thank you. Let's have cupcakes. Okay, this meeting is adjourned at six-thirty-two because we're having cupcakes, y'all.